Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Brian will not be here this evening. He has submitted his resignation. His change to position to speak in felt that if he were appropriate, he could get here every Monday. So, in any event, we will carry on tonight. It's a work session. Work sessions are not formal. There will be no action taken during a work session. The outcome of a work session will be generally to provide direction to staff on how to proceed on a given matter. The agenda this evening, our first item is the discussion of the Grand Street construction. This was something that was brought up as a result of the school district's plans to build a middle and elementary school just immediately east of the Plum Creek State subdivision. So, we had asked staff to look into this and provide some information about this and so on. So, with that, I will turn it over to David Green.
Last March, the council created a benefit district for infrastructure for the USD site following the annexation agreement that was approved in October. This was for the construction of Grand Street between where its current terminus in Plum Creek Estates and over to about Cedar Street.
David, is the light working?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
If it isn't, if it isn't...
One problem, I'm too tall for the mic.
Oh, either squat down or talk louder. Last week, of course, the Plum Creek residents asked you all to review this design, which once again ties into Plum Creek. I wanted to kind of go through the process that got us to where we are today. This is from the comp plan map. What it does is for many years, Grand Street is kind of circuitously connected between Center Street and Moonlight. The section in question goes through Plum Creek Estates. A little history on the Plum Creek Estates connection, going back to some old planning maps we've had. Nineteen sixty-eight showed Grand Street connecting Moonlight and Center between, as a collector. Seventy-eight, another planning map for road network, also had Grand Street between Moonlight and Center. Interestingly enough, the nineteen sixty-eight version showed a school, future school site about where this one's being proposed. The seventy-eight map did not show it. In eighty-seven, once again, all these are aligning along the quarter section line with the existing Grand Street intersection. Several more, but all of them either, with the exception of one year, show the school at that location. In nineteen ninety-six, the current alignment came into being, I'm not sure what happened. Current alignment was proposed as part of a preliminary plat for Plum Creek, which was pretty much the hundred and sixty acres quarter section. It was finalized with the approval of the Plum Creek Estates plat in nineteen ninety-seven. So, again, the plan was always to connect as an arterial between Center and Moonlight. The current alignment was discussed in October. We had a work session to talk about whether or not the city wished to participate as part of a benefit district for the infrastructure required for the school site. We did discuss the fact that, in the discussions, an improvement would be to make that connection at some point in the future. However, the traffic studies then and have been proved out with subsequent indicated that the existing alignment, as has been planned since at least nineteen ninety-six, was adequate for the foreseeable future. Finally, in March 5th, when the benefit district was created, the petition, the resolution, and the engineering contract once again defined Grand Street as tying in with the terminus of Grand Street in Plum Creek Estates. There is a provision for a traffic signal in the benefit district provision, but it is a caveat that it needs to meet warrants. Now, one of the questions that's come up... Take your page. Let's see if I can get this to work. If you could advance that for me. This drawing kind of shows the alignment. It shows the alignment in the green that is contemplated, that is being designed with the benefit district. The future alignment is shown in yellow along the quarter section line.
What is that picture of?
Basically, the yellow, we're showing the northwestern corner of Plum Creek Estates. The north-south road is Center Street. The road with the dashed green line is Grand Street in Plum Creek Estates. The solid green line is what is, will be constructed with the benefit district as part of the school project.
Is this produced, this picture?
Today.
So, basically, what you're saying, Dave, is that our benefit district covers the solid green line. If we were to determine that we wanted the yellow line instead of the solid line as a main throwaway, we would have to find funding for that.
That's correct. The bottom line is, to jump ahead, we have, other than doing some operational analysis of the intersection, no engineering has been done on this. The grab number, you're looking at somewhere between one point two and one point five million dollars to do the extension and to modify. You're gonna have to do some lane widening on Center Street north. You have to do modifications to Grand Street to the west, and there will be land acquisition. Exactly how much, we don't know because we don't have that engineering completed. Bottom line, back to a signal at the existing intersection, you know, based on the traffic work that we've done, it's not warranted. There's adequate, you know, it functions at adequate levels for the foreseeable future. Once you start seeing additional growth on Center Street, when the gaps and the ability to make that left turn and right turn out of that intersection increase the delays, then, at that point, we'll need to be considering a signal. The impact of, one question that's come up is what's the impact of substituting sixty acres of a school site for sixty acres of single family, which has been the impact of that. The net result, in the morning peak, if it was all residential, you'd be looking at the peak hour, it'd be about three hundred and eighty vehicles a day, an hour, for the peak hour in the morning. The evening peak would be about two hundred and twenty-five, once again, if the sixty acres covered by the school site were residential. With the school, excuse me, I made a mistake on that. The school is two hundred and eighty in the morning and two hundred and twenty-five in the evening. If it was residential, it would be about two hundred in the morning and two hundred and twenty-eight in the evening. And one thing, you do have different peak hours. The morning peak for residential is earlier. The school peak is later in the morning, and then, of course, the afternoon peak is mid-afternoon versus late afternoon. Based on the analysis done, traffic signal warrants are not met for a signal at the intersection. And as I previously stated, based on five percent growth per year on all the growth on Center Street, we don't anticipate a signal warrant being met for another five years or so.
The traffic change...
So, the traffic count that's already been performed, you know, what is the number for that? What is the number for that with, when you figure in the traffic count from the school, and how far does that put us off from the warrant?
The warrants are calculated with the impact of the school and with the impact of the background traffic that's on Center Street, calculated using a traffic model, how much traffic will be using Grand Street in addition to the school. So, taking all that into effect, for the opening day of those schools, the warrants aren't met. And using that same data by inflating, by assuming a growth rate of five percent, which we may or may not even see, just what we can see today, it's probably five years out.
How many lots would be in the area north of Grand that would create that? I'm assuming the only growth that would happen, you know, at a rate of five percent a year has to be north of Grand Street, right? I mean, what else is there that needs to be developed?
Well, and what we're trying to do is compare, the only difference between whatever develops to the north, the only difference we're talking here is what is the school district campus displacing? What's happening up north really doesn't figure into that. It's going to be what it is.
Yeah, but what is the growth? What other growth would come into here that would cause five percent a year?
If there's development down...
On Center, right. As the area develops, as the land south on Center Street, you see more traffic using Center Street. That could, that would account for it.
So, there's nothing really to do with Grand Street traffic? It has to do with Center Street traffic?
Center Street is really one of the drive, well, one of the measures, one of the concerns on the traffic signal is how much delay do you have? The delay is caused by the number of gaps in the traffic you have on Center Street. The heavier the traffic on Center Street, the less opportunity you have to exit or enter or cross at Grand Street. It was to say, as Grand Street increases, that will contribute, but the main driving forces the traffic on Center Street.
One of the Plum Creek Estates residents that had sent in some information, he was talking about the two parking lots for the new schools would include parking spaces, and they're anticipating five hundred and ninety vehicles. And you're talking about numbers in the two hundreds for an increase at, you know, peak times in the morning and the afternoon, which sounds like it would account for some of this five hundred and ninety number, but what about the, I mean, I, you know, I've got kids in schools. I see the amount of car traffic that goes, you know, to Wee Ridge and the high school, for instance. I'd have to think that, I mean, the number sounds low.
I would probably have to defer to the traffic engineer, Mr. Petering here, to talk about that, but, once again, this is based on those peak hours. I think in anything, there are instances where, you know, parking lots may be filled, but as far as, you know, the traffic, the analysis that's used, this is what we have. This Ron Petering with Schaefer-Clyton.
Yeah, what I can say on it is that the total trips going to the school would be higher than what we just quoted, but I think what Mr. Green's looking at is information of the impact on Grand Street as it connects to Center. And there, we're talking two hundred and some odd vehicles, a two-twenty some odd. There's that much and more that go from the schools off to Moonlight, and that's where, actually, we projected much more than half the traffic to go. So, you look at the entire size of the parking lot, it's not all coming to Center. It's going in different directions, and that's why even some of it would be going south within the Plum Creek subdivision before you could get to some of the residents there. That's why the difference between the number that was...
Is there any estimate, and I understand it'd probably be just the most educated guess possible, but since district lines haven't been roughly drawn yet with the school, is there any sort of estimate placed, plus or minus, as far as what the impact of the redistricting would be of where that traffic might be coming from and how it'll be coming in? Because the lines are drawn such way, it may not a lot be coming in from the Moonlight side. It may all be entering Center Street because that's where all the residents will be for that side of the school. So, there really won't be a split of traffic coming in from that way because the kids won't be from that side.
I can say that we've been giving information to, you know, when we started a year ago to do that kind of estimate on, because that's one of the things we need to do, was to develop a real listing, split of the traffic, and that's what we've done based on information we've given.
I'm assuming at Sunflower, where the stoplight is, that that traffic there is not warranted, the stoplights. Is that true? Or was, did the traffic on Center Street warrant a stoplight from Sunflower?
At that point, because it was immediately at the school, there is justification for a traffic light or a school crossing. At this point, we don't have the information on how many people are going to be crossing Center Street. I think we probably won't have that till the school is open. But specifically with Sunflower, the signal was placed at that intersection because of the crossing, and the known crossings at that location.
David, how difficult will it be, once, you know, the school is closed opening and we have a better way to be impacted or understand the impact, to not have to wait for, say, you say, "We understand that the traffic's going to dictate a light. Let's put a light in." What, I mean, how will that work?
Well, at this point, what we have with traffic, traffic is not justifying...
Right.
We don't have answers on the pedestrian crossing. There are other ways that pedestrians could be handled if that was an issue in the short term. We do not want to install a light if it's not warranted. Several ways to look at that. I mean, number one, if you install, typically, when you install a traffic light, you will see it increase in accidents. So, you install a light that's not warranted, you'll see it increase in accidents, other types of accidents. The other item, too, is if you're going, if this light isn't warranted, there are the locations in the city that are approaching the need. You want to put money where it's not needed to take what money we do have and take it away from a place that may need a light. So, you know, you just have, you, one needs to follow the guidelines of the manual of uniform traffic control devices just to maintain viability and functionality.
Right. If the road standards is where it cuts through the subdivision and the Grand Streets are offset, if there were a light put in place, let's say the light comes before the future realignment of Grand Street is what we see on the screen right now, how would we be able to accommodate the left turn traffic coming off of, is it West Grand on the other side? Because they're gonna get blocked by the light, and they're gonna be blocked into that side of town because there's not a great access unless you go up the road a little bit further. How they accommodate those type of things? Does that make sense?
Well, it's one of the issues in why, once a signal's warranted, why we're recommending, if possible, to make that realignment. You could, if a signal's warranted, put a temporary signal at that location and then just, because there's not that heavy a traffic to the west. However, long-term, that would not be good. There's only about three hundred and some odd feet, so I guess you would have some issues with conflicting left turns. I don't know if that, I think, were close. It could be accommodated on the short-term. Long-term, a signal at existing Grand would not be the best solution.
Right.
Based on feedback, which I've known you see, you have seen, the residents of that area, and my understanding is some representation from the school board as well, were under the impression that this future realignment of Grand Street was what was kind of approved, presented, and going to be. At any point in time, was that the direction that we were moving toward?
Yeah. When we first, the first discussion with council was October 10th. The realignment was presented as a future need, but not part of this current package. When the annexation agreement was approved on October 17th, once again, the realignment was presented as a future need, not part of the benefit package, benefit district package. At that point, we didn't have an estimate, still don't have a good estimate. We were somewhere in the three-quarter of a million range or more, based on some more looking. Once again, we're probably at the one point two, one point five. So, once again, that was presented as, here's what we're doing with the benefit district. Please understand, at some point in the future, a signal will be needed, and at that time, we would recommend the realignment of Grand Street. And then, finally, once again, it was part of the council action forum, and no doubt my presentation to you on March 5th, when the benefit district petition was accepted and approved, funding was created, and we approved the contract with Schaefer-Clyton for the design.
Yeah, and I mean, I understand all that. I guess my question, maybe a better word would have been, in meetings that you had with the school district that we were privy to prior to that decision coming up with, was that ever the solution that was presented?
We discussed it, however, knowing, number one, you know, it was, funding was not available on both sides. Number two, we had an existing alignment, which has always been planned for those usage. Number three, even the preliminary traffic studies were indicating that a signal was not warranted and that the existing alignment, which has been a matter of record since at least ninety-six, would work. So, that's how, how we came to conclusion, we will be working with what we have, and we'll be looking at that in the future.
If you do the realignment in the future, what happens to the house adjacent to that street?
Well, since I don't have any engineering done, it's conceivable it may stay, it may not, but at this point, I really can't speculate. We would have to get into a preliminary design to find out what we can and can't do.
But based on what you would expect would cause a realignment, which is an increase in traffic, just based on the normal lane size and number of turn lanes?
It's conceivable that...
It doesn't look like there's much space there, does it?
Well, there's about, give or take, fifty feet from the section line to the house. The projections indicate, once again, it's a three-lane road, which would basically give you a through, a westbound to westbound through, right, westbound left turn, and an eastbound lane. We could get around sixty feet right away. It's conceivable that we could work with it. I think that's, beyond that, I really don't want to speculate because having been in this position saying, "Oh, yes, we will take the house." No, we won't. We're gonna go places we're not ready to go. It's, it's going to be an issue we will have to...
It's gonna be a tough fit, though, right?
It's conceivable it can fit.
But it's not likely.
It's conceivable it can fit. That's as far as you're gonna get at it.
And that's a collector...
It is a collector.
It's designed for a collector.
That's correct.
If it's not designed, it's an arterial.
That's correct.
David, I'm just trying to look as much as I can today, and you may have to educate me just a little bit more, maybe, because of the folks in Plum Creek more than mine. I'm looking at the plat, the map that was the plat that was issued on November the first, the two thousand and eleven, and then I'm looking at the final development plan that was issued dated on eleven, two, eleven. One shows the road going through, Grand Street going straight through and already being cut that way. So, I'm wondering what folks, or the public saw on that, because I'm wondering if that's where some confusion. I also want to ask, since I wasn't here then, how much input came from the folks in Plum Creek to council and emails and things during the annexation votes and the other pieces of it?
I never see any. However, I mean, and that was kind of what I was trying to get to earlier. I mean, we were presented that this was all a future realignment. I mean, pretty much what Dave's saying, everything that I heard during that time was that.
That's what we were.
Yeah, but however, I mean, I don't know how other people perceive that, and I don't know what conversations could have happened, you know, outside of that to come to the conclusion. Because from my perspective, I didn't realize that that would even be an option right now. I mean, I thought that would have, would have been bettered and decided it just didn't make sense from a cost perspective or what have you.
I can tell you that when you look at the drawings that we received from the school board, and that was often what we were working off of, first statement, if you, if you look at this here, you've got the little hump, and then when it comes down, it's straightened out. Now, it didn't go all the way, when I look back at it now, it didn't go over all the way to Center Street. It died probably a little bit past where this arrow is. But I know that when we were talking about it back in October, one of the things that, when we were, when we were discussing it, streets, Grand Street between Center and Moonlight, and it goes down for a ways. It also indicates that Grand Street should extend to Plum, to Center Street, north of Plum Creek, in an intersection improvement, and a signal at Center Street, but it does say by two thousand and seventeen. But I can understand where there's probably some misconceptions because when you looked at the school's renderings, it showed it going straight through, north of the, north of the subdivision, but just not terminating at Center Street. I also, I mean, I, I know that you had talks with the school board, and obviously, this is probably something that they wanted to try and keep their costs down on, and that's why they came to the city in the first place. But, I mean, original staff recommendation was that, that we not participate in the cost of constructing Grand Street at all, in which case, the school district would have had to have done it. And if we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of a seventy-five million dollar bond issue, shoot, now I'm, I'm wondering if they couldn't have found that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars themselves.
Yeah, but, I mean, I guess, from my perspective, we voted. We approved this particular plan. I'm assuming that we can change that, and we can say, "No, we want this new piece," but then the question is, do we want to find the one point five million dollars to fund it? I mean, that's really what it boils down to, right?
How would we do that if the school's sharing the cost?
Well, we, the school wouldn't share in that part of the cost because that part's not included in the benefit district. So, that's why I'm saying, from the city perspective, if we want that, then we would have to find, sell one point five million to pay for it. Right?
Let's, let's see assessment, please.
Not in the benefit district, as you stated. Right. Could be all on.
But in, if we do it in five years, then we will have built a connector through to, through Plum Creek Estates, and we're still going to have to bear the cost at some point.
If the alignment's necessary. I mean, that's the, again, that's the...
The key.
The ideal, as I understand it, would be to do that. It's not a requirement. Could a, can you put a roundabout on an arterial or not? Is that permitted?
Oh, yeah. Find examples of that, yeah.
So, if you were to put a roundabout at East Grand and Center, that would be a traffic calming mechanism that, and they're used in lieu of signals. Is that correct? Is that their purpose?
If they, under certain conditions, certain volumes. Now, the flip side of a signal, a roundabout, is you would be buying lots of property because they take up lots of room.
Right.
The roundabouts can be used on high volumes. There's a certain threshold where you can't. I mean, I've seen them on arterials in other states, but I think it would be something that, you know, would need to be looked... But I think it would be something that, you know, would need to be looked at. I think because of the tightness here, my gut would tell me that a signal would be the best application. Because I think the signal would be less expensive than a roundabout.
That roundabout?
Yes.
Can you offset a signal? In other words, can you signalize grand as that offset intersection?
It could be done. That's one reason why we are, once it's signaledized, it would be best to go ahead and relocate.
Straight across?
Right.
But offset signals aren't possible?
It's possible, they don't work as well. Because once again, I think the only saving grace is East Grand is not as heavy a volume.
Right.
But once again, you've got opposing left turns. You're going to do whatever you take for left turn for the west leg. It's going to take away from the left turn from what would be the primary motion. The best solution long-term would be to realign.
Do we have any signalized collectors? I mean, sunflower, the only reason that's there is because-
Well, we have signal, okay, Madison is an example. Madison and Center is signalized.
Okay.
We will be signaling, signalizing the warrants were met, the need is there at Moonlight, at the other end of this street.
Okay, Moonlight and, or-
Right, because of the much heavier volume over there than here. So, as part of this benefit district project, a signal's going in there. Actually, a roundabout's going in where it ties into White, as part of the project.
As part of the project, okay.
Probably to answer Mr. Freeman's question, the reason you see that little bit of rightaway going over to the property line, which is basically the edge of the field, is just for the future consideration of realignment. So, at least, instead of having to go back to the owners on the north side there, the school district picked that up as part of their acquisition with the not property. So, that was the purpose of that, right, thirty foot-
Why the plat shows that way?
Yes, it was to go ahead, they picked that up as part of their acquisition. So, we would, when the future, when the time comes, have rightaway on the north side.
What are the financing methods for a project like this? So, I mean, right, let's, five years from now, we have to come in. In five years, if it's seven and a half, or 750 to a million, two project now, it's probably going to be a billion five to a million seven, five in five years. What's the funding process for that?
Just do geo bonds probably. And then be, in my head, I'm doing a quick figure, probably a couple hundred thousand a year for 10 years for 1.5 or so.
Do we have any idea where the benefit district is? Is there going to be a, is there going to be a special assessment for some of these improvements? I've heard that-
That's what a benefit district is. There will be a special assessment to the school district.
No, I mean, beyond the school district, will there be one for subdivisions?
No.
What if we added this road? There would be any-
You'd still have to decide who's benefiting. We did not do a benefit fee district, is that what you're asking?
Maybe that's what I-
We did not.
One that's specific to the general-
To develop, specific to later development, we did not. You could always go back and do one. We did not do it at the time of the annexation agreement. But at the time of the annexation agreement and the formation of this benefit district, the only benefiting property owner is the school district. They're going to pay 50% and the city's going to pay the other 50%. No one else was involved.
So, are you going, are you kind of, I'm just going to say suggestion, but, I mean, that that 1.2, 1.5 million that we would assess, develop out of the benefit district, that Plum Creek residents specifically would-
I don't think they'd ever be able to afford it.
Well, no, I mean, that, yeah. Was that kind of where you were?
Well, I'm just suggesting that if, rather than fund that with, you know, city debt, maybe the developer that develops everything north of that could, you know, we could do a special benefit district for that.
How much money is there north of it for development?
Well, let me answer this, but I have this question first. I think fairly stated, how would you determine who's benefiting from an extension of Grand Street that's connecting to the city arterial? I mean, yes, we can go back and talk to somebody about a developer benefit fee district, but that was part of the problem before. How would you determine who's benefiting citywide? Because it has to be fairly done by statute.
Do we have any benefit fee districts?
No. We have, we have one on the Russell Benefit District. But that's only if we can determine, we didn't see it yet because that's the other part. Based on water basins, sub-basins, whatever, how can you determine until you know who went annexed, who's benefiting? And it would be the same thing here.
But other cities do it quite often, right?
I'm not saying we would never do it. I'm just saying, in this specific instance, we'd have to see what's going to develop before you could tag it with who benefited. And part of it would most assured leave the city at large anyway, because clearly, the whole city would benefit. So, you would, the city would have a portion. I wouldn't say, you know, who knows, 50/50 or whatever, but those are very vague, serial for sure because you don't know what might develop. And that was part of the problem. How would you determine who's benefiting if you don't know what's likely to happen?
They've sold into our cost for the proposal as it is today, for the proposal we're moving forward with. Are there any costs in there for Grand Street from Center to where the benefit district starts, so the existing Grand Street? Are there any improvements or costs built in or work done specifically on that part of the street?
Before some striping and some modifications at the intersection, but it'd be mainly just channelizing, just realigning.
So, there's no cost that we can save or allocate to this?
No, nothing substantial.
Okay.
You've got a sidewalk to extend, you've got, you know, you've got some paint. But as far as changing the alignment, no, it's not going to happen.
Is there any chance that that road will not be built, past plan? And, I mean, one of the concerns I heard from one of the residents in Plum Creek Estates is that the traffic would be routed to a future date through Potty Lane and back over. Is that even a remote possibility, that the road will be built till later in the-
No, the road, the road's under the design. It, plans should be completed in the next month or so. You'll have a contract for construction to consider by midsummer. And the construction of the roadway is to be completed prior to the opening of the school next year. So, no, it's going. You're under contract to get it done by summer next year and that's where we're heading. One thing about this section of Grand Street is, once again, as we've talked several times, it is built as a collector. Unlike some collectors that we do have in town that have houses fronting on it, this actually has no houses with driveways directly onto it. The three houses in the corner access that knuckle or that little cul-de-sac. The rest of the houses adjacent to us access the side road. So, it's actually, access is as a collector should be. You don't have any driveways on it. So, it was designed as a collector, intended as a collector. As I say, since 96, it's been planned as a collector.
Will there be any direct construction on that road during the whole school development until, I mean, just at the tip of it where it connects? Is that the only time it's going to turn the other?
You'll see some sidewalk work going to make some connections towards the east end. You'll see some sidewalk work and painting on the existing pavements of the Center Street.
Will there be, and I drove by and didn't pay attention to this side of it. Is there full sidewalk access on Grand Street right now, connecting from where the school will be to Center Street? Or is that part of what we're going to have to do there for the district?
The part of the benefit district includes a bike and hike trail on the south side of the road and also a sidewalk on the north side of the road.
All the way through to Center Street?
And then we tie in with the existing sidewalk on Grand Street.
Dave, where is the property that's owned along where the new Grand Street would go? How far west does the school district own property?
Let me pull up the drawing Mr. Freeman was talking about. Let's go with PDF. Okay, I think this is the drawing you were looking at. This isn't the plat. This may or may not, but it does show how it's tying into the existing alignment. This doesn't go far enough west.
Right.
But if you see where the road kind of heads to the southwest, part of the platted property, part of what the school district owns, is a 30-foot strip along the south line, all the way out to, let's go back to that previous drawing.
The Grand?
Yeah, the, basically where the tree line is, that would be the west edge of the farmland. The school district owns a 30-foot strip beginning at that tree line, back to where the road curves to the north. Now, on the south side, there's a whole series of easements. There's a pedestrian easement for the future extension of a pedestrian path in the back when it was platted. There's, I can't remember exactly how many feet of easements, but between utility easements and pedestrian easement, the northern part of those three properties, the two properties in front, the intersection line, are pretty well encumbered with easements.
So, you're saying the school district owns 30 feet out to the edge of this farm property here? So, the amount of acquisitions that it'd have to take places from the farm property west to Center Street?
On the north side, it'd be from there west. On the south side, there are existing easements, but they are not road rightaway. So, there would be acquisitions on the south side also.
A little bit west of Center Street too, isn't it?
Right, and west of Center don't have the impacts, but once again, concern was to the house on the north side, on the east side, all those houses are fairly closed and it's fairly tight right away. Once again, we'd need, to go into more detail, we would need to do the analysis.
The, I think we all received the same email from one of the Plum Creek Estates residents talking about surveyors being out to build a greenway trail. Basically, I'm guessing from where the property starts to go through, is there a planned greenway trail from the north down through Plum Creek Estates?
Oh, on the south side, actually, that's just to get a sidewalk connection to that cul-de-sac. It's the northernmost cul-de-sac. There is basically Homes Association owned property. There's kind of a tom and ground there. Need to do some surveys to get better survey information to find out how to do that. And also some grading limits, that's the party I'm thinking of. You have a fence and there are some grading limits and it'd be good to get more elevational information. But as far as a greenway or anything coming out of Plum Creek, what was been discussed is a sidewalk connection off the end of the cul-de-sac.
Okay. Is the sidewalk only required because of the improvements being made to utilize that road?
The sidewalk, basically, it's a, to provide better access to people who may be wanting to get to the sidewalk. Maybe their children want to get there. Instead of having to backtrack around, going down to Plum Creek Drive and back up, they would have a more direct access to the sidewalk if that's their choice. We run into many instances where we do have cul-de-sacs or adjacent to school properties, no direct access. And we get quite a few calls on, how do I get to school? Without going around a city block. So, that was the thought behind that side view.
Has there been any discussion with the school district about participating in, moving that along since the conversations we had last fall?
No, there hasn't.
But in order for that to happen, I mean, we still would have to come up with, I'm assuming, I mean, I guess, I still come back to, are we willing as a council to say, like, immediately, we want to change direction and do this and find the additional funding? And even if the school district would be willing to pass the funding? And, I mean, I think that's what we need to decide.
I didn't want to pay for any of the funding to begin with, so.
I'm sorry, I have two more questions. These were the email that we received today. One of the concerns was, before the road is developed, the future realignment, as it's channeling westbound, cutting through Plum Creek Drive, as we see on the map right now, access to the other subdivisions on that side. Would there be a way even for the city just to note left turn signage there? So that they can't turn going westbound into that street until they get onto Center? Just to divert that traffic? If you look right here, they're going west on East Grand, back out of the school. So, they pick up their child there and back towards Center Street. There's some concern that they'll turn left, go right on Plum Creek Drive, smack that through the middle of the subdivision where there are driveways facing all the children and everything else. Is there a way, just a simple no left turn sign there could divert that traffic away?
Well, we're not sure how much traffic you'd be diverting. I think the main people that will be penalized would be the people that live there. They can't make a left turn in their own subdivision.
That's fair. But I think the biggest concern was the through traffic, not that the holes.
You can do a left turn during a certain hour.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that might be something to consider, I guess, with the-
If there's, if it turns out there's an issue there, I think that's very speculative at this point.
The other question was, well, it's worse than anything where there's a no left turn sign. I mean, hopefully, we've got folks that have time and can do that. But again, assuming down the road, future realignment comes, how will East Grand be capped off? So, it no longer has access to the road going into the school? And be done in a spec manner because it does back up to home.
I think the most probable solution would be that Grand Street at Center Street would be terminated and there would be a connection up to Grand, up to Grand Street out of Plum Creek. So, that way, you get the connection off of the arterial and onto the collector.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to, I'll just have to be honest, I missed it.
Okay, no problem. Basically, you see the, on the drawing, where the three houses are.
Right.
The intersection, okay. The section from there to Center Street would probably be taken out.
Okay.
Then, you'd end up with some acquisition issues. You'd have to take a corner and then you tie the, tie the eastern corner up into the new grand.
Okay.
And you'd have to turn it to where it tie into a right angle as best you can.
So, they just turn east and then turn back west?
Right, so therefore, your connection would be off of the arterial, which is the whole issue with the offset intersections and get them onto the minor street.
Okay.
And that's the probable way. Five years out, we'll see what the next guy comes up with, but it's a very likely solution.
Can we go back to that drawing that you had up just previous to this? I realize we're only at 24% here. Is there any way we could zoom in on this bottom left corner?
Just over here.
Down?
Down here?
That.
Sure.
Yeah, you'll have to, maybe a little bigger.
Better?
A little bigger.
How about that? More? One more.
So, this. Is everybody, this is what we, is pretty much the way it looked to us platted before, is that correct? Would you agree with that? And how the line is darker all the way out here? I think that the residents were, and possibly people on the council, were laboring under a misconception. I honestly was digesting an awful lot of information all at once about this when I don't understand something. And I'm certainly willing to admit that when I made a mistake in understanding it. But I look at that and I kept all the plans that I saw and it kept looking like the, like the road was going through north of this- and it kept looking like the road was going through north of this subdivision. And when I read the council action form that day, and it's talking about Grand Street extending to Center North of Plum Creek on the intersection, and a signal at Center. Now, that's where I misunderstood, because I'm looking at, by 2017, but 2013, 2014? That's before 2017. I look at this map, it looks like that's the way that we're heading to Center Street. I understand why they were misperceiving what the plan was, because I was misperceiving what the plan was myself. I go back and read it, and read it again, and I get it. But I don't know how much land acquisition is, but, I mean, we're talking about fifty yards? Hundred, from where that terminates, from where they have thirty feet to the west of where Grand Street will cut off right now?
This is, are you talking Grand Street?
Yeah, but we'd have to go back to the other drawing.
Yeah, this is down at the southwest part of the property.
Yeah. What I'm talking about is, is that from where that field ends to the street? Yeah, is that, what is that? That's fifty yards.
Well, you have, right-of-way, and as I mentioned, you also will have to acquire on the south side, because even though there are easements, they're not road right-of-way. So, therefore, they will have to be acquired as road right-of-way. So, you basically will have to acquire thirty feet on the south side of the section line. Also, on top of, basically have to buy on top of existing pedestrian and utilities. So, just because they're encumbered with an easement doesn't mean that they're available for road right-of-way. Therefore, your acquisition east of Center includes issues on the north side of that smaller section, but also on the south side from Center to where, basically ties in with Grand west-east edge of Plum Creek Estates.
Well.
I mean, it's there.
And I don't, I don't know that there is something that we can do here. But I would suggest that, you know, I wish that maybe we would have applied a different acronym back while we were going over this, and that's keep it simple for stupid, and make it so that I understand that that's not where the road was going. I mean, I've talked to other people that were laboring under the same misperception. And when I had residents from the homeowners association that were talking to me, this was not very clear. I go back and read it, and I make sense of it, but when it was presented to us, and when the school district was here, and they've got big maps that they're showing us, and I'm seeing that line heading out towards the west, I'm thinking, "We're building a road there." So, I am, I'm concerned for, the same concerns that the Plum Creek people have, but what can we do about it? Gets back to Christie's question. And.
I mean, we could do something about it if we were to find, I guess, one point five million dollars, I think that's, to quickly, like, in, I'm assuming this year's budget. Well, I don't know.
I mean, you're under an annexation agreement, stop me, Dave, if I'm wrong, but you're under an annexation agreement to finish the park in green, so the school can open. I mean, if you wanted to never have a car go to the school through Plum Creek, that's your hurry. That's what you're saying, we need to find it quickly? Yeah, it'd have to be pretty quick. But if you're saying, "Okay, well, we'll work on that as quick as we can," then budget for it. But otherwise, if you're saying quickly, then yeah, you're right. If you want one of any cars to go through there before the school opens?
Two of the three houses in that circle are going to be impacted negatively either way, right? I mean, if you're going to take thirty feet of their yard, or.
Well, their fences are fairly set back, but still, there will have, there will be a street behind it.
There's going to be some.
Well, I mean, yeah, you can put a street behind them, yeah.
Right, so that leaves one house that's, you know, impacted.
There's no project that we do that doesn't impact some of it.
I guess, where are the other houses that are impacted?
Two, are they the two on the northwest corner and southwest corner of Grand and Center? Those the two that are going to be impacted because of the intersection on the west side? Are they going to get impacted?
Are we, oh, you have the two.
On Grand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, those houses are not, they're fairly close, and it was an old road. Exactly what the impacts will be, we would have to do some preliminary work.
Right, but I mean, that side, the west side of Center and Grand would need some improvement.
Yeah, absolutely. You'd have to tie into it, and.
But on the Plum Creek Estates side, two of the houses are going to lose some backyard.
Right, yeah. I believe their fence is already set back because of the easements that currently exist.
So, they won't lose any of the backyard?
They probably will have less impact just because of existing easements. Fence may have to be done over here.
You ready to go on to the next topic?
I don't know, we, what direction are we wanting to provide the staff? Proceed with the current alignment and begin the process of assessing the cost of the realignment?
I, you know, I, personally, we're at a work session.
Right.
We've got a big audience. Thank you for coming, everyone. But I know a lot of them are Plum Creek residents, and I kind of would like to get, I don't want to change the field of the meeting. I don't want them to have to give public comments tonight, but I, you know, I think maybe we don't decide tonight, but give them a week to make a case. But the way it looks right now, I don't know that they're, that this is something that we're going to be able to accommodate right now.
I mean, that's it. The not deciding is proceeding of the existing. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the only piece that's not been discussed is an engineering examination of the realignment at this point in time, rather than some future aid.
Correct. At this point, I think you're on, pretty much the destiny of the road on green is set by contract. An annexation agreement says that the city's going to have that thing in by the benefit district before the school. Now, I think your choices are, do you want to wait until traffic warrants are in place, or for a signal, to proceed, or else go ahead and start the preliminary engineering now, so you have a better handle on what you've got? One item the traffic engineers have said, if it's unsignalized, you're actually better off with the split signal, because there's fewer operations. Once you go to a signal, then the combined would be a preferable. But until you put a signal in, actually, the existing alignment is a better solution for the short term. So, I guess back to, you know, I think your decision points are, you want to get better cost information on the realignment, which will take some money. You need to do some analysis on that. That way, you can better program for in the future.
And you can program in debt payments, not to pay cash for your road?
Right.
I don't think you find that any tightly mattered.
But, okay, so, but basically, what we could do is we could say, "Okay, go get us some costs on this realignment, and if we so decided, we could say, 'We want that as a priority project beginning in 2013,' so that it's done by the time the school opens."
I don't think you'd be able to get it done. I think, opening day, you're basically looking at only the elementary school. I think, you know, if this council chooses to spend money that we're struggling to have on that, I think folks would have to just deal with the traffic, which is going to be basically peak morning and afternoon for an elementary school, and proceed and put the realignment in sooner. Whether or not it gets signals, another story. Once again, if the warrants aren't there, we wouldn't be recommending that. But that's something we would have to be looking at. So, it's a case of, does the road, do we proceed now on getting more information on the alignment, so you can better prepare to spend the money for it? Better prepare yourself to program in those debt payments now, or wait until we get closer to the time signal watching? I guess those are the two choices I said. As far as continuing the project, you know, we're under contract to get a road in to get the elementary school. It's a case of do it start now or start later on the realignment.
Well, the road we're talking about, building, right, has to go anyway.
That is correct.
Right, yeah, the green, solid green has to go regardless.
The green line has to go. It's just the yellow line plus intersection improvements. Do we want to go ahead and proceed to get better information on that now, or wait a few years? Probably the decision point that council has.
I mean, we already have all the information we need. The information that was presented was misread by a number of people, including some council members. It's not like we're ever saying that that road will never be developed. It's going to be developed when it's warranted, and we're going to have to fund it at some future point. So, I don't see any need to spend any more time on it, honestly. I mean, we know all the knowns here, right? Is there something that, I mean, we can't afford to pay for the road, really, or the engineering, right now? I mean, we don't have a big pocket, or a big bucket of cash laying around, right?
That's correct.
So, I mean, certainly, we're going to have more need for that money on other projects than a road that may or may not come in five years. Is that clear? I mean, we can actually get a return on our investment if we, again, make improvements to the sewage, you know, to the wastewater lines, so that they don't leak when it rains, right? Or more bank for a buck, and making the building more efficient, right? So, that's money that could be used and has a return on the investment. So, I think we ought to move on.
Okay. I agree, I want.
Okay, so, we're going to proceed with the plan as is. All right, thank you. All right. The next item for discussion tonight is health insurance rates in the plan discussion.
Let me start off while Laura's setting up, and I want to compliment Mary and Laura for their work on this. Short timeframe that they have to do all this, but our plan year is not coincidental with our calendar or budget year, so it makes it a little bit more complicated. In the way of an overview, I think we all know that healthcare costs are going up for all of us, for everyone. Some of the reasons are just improved technology and things that cost more money. Consolidation amongst hospitals and physician providers, which diminishes some competition and results in increased prices. And cost shifting, quite frankly, from Medicare and Medicaid, where they get increased funding approximately around three percent a year. Their costs go up about double that, about six or seven percent a year. So, to make up that difference, it comes from private insurers and us that pay those premiums. There's also, there's been additional concern about the weight problem we have in the United States. Weight management as it relates to induced stress, heart disease, diabetes, all kinds of other problems, continues to put demands on our system and raises costs for all of us. So, in that context, most national, and PricewaterhouseCoopers really does the most work on healthcare costs. They've estimated, on average, eight and a half percent for the next plan year, about eight and a half percent for eleven to twelve, and perhaps the same number, if not a little higher, next year. Depends on who you ask. Some say seven and a half, others say eight and a half. But it's in that neighborhood, and that's just on average nationwide. So, what are those of us who have to pay for this doing in the way of trying to manage that ever-increasing burden of healthcare costs? Well, we're all trying to hold costs down. I think there are a lot of techniques that have been utilized and will continue to be utilized, one of which is increased cost sharing with employees, employers paying a smaller percentage of the overall premium cost as time goes on. Increasing deductibles, the out-of-pocket exposure for individuals and families as a result of employers saying, "We're paying a fixed amount. Anything else is on you." So, that creates an out-of-pocket demand that also is part of the trend, shifting away from employer, employers bearing the entire burden of this cost. Healthcare reform, as we know, is coming in some form or fashion. We don't know what it's going to look like, but people are already getting positioned to deal with that. That's creating some costs and other issues that are getting people thinking a lot about what's going to happen. Eighty-four percent of employers nationwide are making changes in their plan design for this upcoming plan year. Eighty-six percent are reevaluating their strategy and providing, eighty-nine percent of employers are increasing their health and wellness efforts. Just as a snapshot, in 2002, average healthcare costs for a family of four were $9,235. 2011, for that same family of four, $19,393. That is more than a doubling in costs in less than nine years for healthcare. So, it's affecting everyone. It's affecting employers who provide it, individuals, Medicare, Medicaid. There's no one's immune from this dilemma. Toward that end, what the city was looking at, if we kept the exact same plan in place that we have for this year, for the 2011-12 plan year, our costs were going to go up in the neighborhood of $85,000 to $100,000 with the exact same offering. No plan design change. And again, all things being equal, no new employees, no fewer employees, just you have to keep everything the same to do an apples-to-apples comparison. We believe that that was unacceptable, and something that we did not feel was appropriate for us to just come to you with a bill for another $100,000 for the same plan. So, we've been working pretty diligently, and I say we, it's primarily Mary and Laura. Been doing the lion's share of the work on this, and have come up with a plan that helps us shift to a higher deductible, high deductible plan, which we already offer, which we have a few participants, and make this shift such that a good number of our employees will do it and give us an opportunity to manage our costs a little bit better. At the end of the story, what you will hear is, if we invest maybe a few thousand dollars in the 2012 year, we would be looking at close to a $100,000 reduction in what was proposed for the 2014 plan year of about $100,000. So, moving in the right direction, maintaining some things that we think are important to maintain, which are that the out-of-pocket for employees doesn't change as a result of changes in healthcare, and that their exposure to liability and risk is minimized through contributions to their health savings accounts. So, we believe we have a plan that does this. We think it's very workable. It's going to be a change for employees. It's going to be a change for employees. We're going to have to do a lot of education. We're going to have to do a lot of individual counseling. We're going to have sheets prepared for each employee and what their plan is now and what we hope they migrate to, and show what that means. So with all that work, and I'm going to turn it over to, I think, Mary first, get started on some of these slides and ask that if you listen to the presentation, you're probably going to have some questions. If you could, they might be answered by something that happens later in the presentation. So if you can hold off on questions until we get there, that would be great. So, Mary?
Can you test it? Is it working? It's working. Okay. Then I'll run it back. Okay.
Good evening. As you all recall, we had quite a discussion last year on our healthcare. During the budget discussions, there was a lot of ideas expressed and a desire to find a sustainable solution to mitigate rising healthcare costs. Staff's proposing a solution that both mitigates the cost to the city and creates a partnership with our employees to provide quality healthcare and avoid a sudden significant financial strain. There we go. So for a little history, currently, our health revision, we look at those together. The city currently pays 90% of our least expensive employee-only plan and 80% of the least expensive Tier 2 and Family Plan, and that is excluding the high deductible. So it's the HMO on two of them and the PPOB on one of them. So whichever is the cheapest is what we were paying. So in our new structure, we're looking to move to the Consumer Driven Health Plan, which is currently our high deductible health plan. We want to make sure that you all do know and understand that our plan year begins July 1, 2012. Our plan year runs 12 to 13, a little different than our budget year, so we have to deal with both of those. And in this new plan, we're proposing that the city would pay 100% of the employee-only and 80% of the Tier 2 and Family Plan.
So to walk you through what this slide says, the first line is where we are today. For 2012, with the city paying 90% of the employee-only and 80% of the other, family in Tier 2, it's $855,000. And as we stated to you, toward moving people to the high deductible health plan, if we can incent employees to go to the high deductible health plan beginning July 1, which is halfway through our budget year, but that's when our plan year starts, including some seed money into their HSA account, we come out pretty much flat. That $862,000 is a $7,000 difference between what we are today, but that's using all the assumptions that people won't change from family to single, or nobody will drop off, or nobody will join on. You have to start with a baseline assumption in order to do these comparisons. So assuming no changes other than incenting people to go to the high deductible, you lose out on $7,000. So maybe you spend a little this year. And then the 2013, and again, I'm talking budget years, if we had stayed with what we're currently doing, with 90% of the employee and 80% of all the others, and building in a 10% premium increase assumption, because that's historically what it has been, we go up to $936,000. A full year on the new plan of HGHP, even including incentive money to move over, seeding the HSA, we go down to $837,000. And the reason why it falls is because we have almost six months of, you know, five months of plan year in 2012 budget year at the old way. So we actually save money even if you spend money into their HSA. So as we stated before, this was a partnership proposal. It involves the city and the employee and the pool. So what we're asking for the council to consider is that the city pays 100% of the employee-only premium and 80% of the others, as I stated, and that you do fund the HSA in some portion if the employee meets the requirements. And I'll get to that in just a second, what their requirements are. What we're asking the city to do for single, or I would say employee-only plan, is if you would put $300 upfront in their account so that they actually have some seed money to start, in case they have to go to the doctor July 3. And then, as long as they meet the requirements, that we'll get to in a minute, you'll do an additional $25 per month. For everybody else, other than employee-only, we're asking for a $600 upfront, and this is one time, one year, and then an additional $50 a month. And that's just to get them started. And then also, the city is, we're asking that council consider some wellness hours. We're calling it a wellness plan. The employee portion of this partnership is because the high deductible premiums are cheaper than all the other ones being offered, our whole intent was that the city employees would take home no less than their take-home pay. So we're saying the difference between what the employees pay today, whatever plan they're on, all has to go into their health savings account too, in order to get the city's money. If you don't put yours in, you're not getting the city's money. So that's their share of this. And then also that they actually participate in the wellness plan we're asking you to consider. And then the pool itself, they put in $25 a month for employee-only and $50 a month for everyone else. And that's period. That's whether the employee puts their premium savings in or not. So they're getting a little bit, but we're asking the city to help mitigate the pain one time. And the whole point of this is, we're not offering this seed money next year, this year. And the only way you could be eligible next year is if you're new.
When you say year, that is from July 1 of 2012 through?
That's the plan year. Right, right. If you don't, if you're an existing employee and you're on healthcare now or during open enrollment, you get on now to get the city's funding, this upfront seed money, or if you don't change your plan, you're not getting it.
You're not getting seed. $300.
So we'll talk just a little bit about the wellness plan. As Laura stated, one of the options or restrictions is that you must participate in our wellness plan. In order for consumer-driven healthcare plans to really be good and productive and start seeing the savings on our premiums, our employees must be well, and we want to promote that. So we are proposing wellness hours. These items are paid 100% by the plan, so it doesn't cost our employees to go and get their physicals, two dental checks, a mammogram, vision check, and routine colonoscopies, or unless they're ordered by a physician. These are the things that the pool tells us, here's what we need to focus on. These were the things that will help us have a more healthy, productive workforce. So up to these hours, nothing more, but this is the part about, we want you to be well, and we want you to participate in being well. That helps us also then keep our costs, mitigate our costs, and hopefully can start to drive this down. Now, this year, we're also proposing that we go ahead and offer our alternative, our alternative plans that we have, our two HMOs and the other PPO Plan B. I think you all are familiar with those. But in order to, again, keep that cost flat for the city, we're only going to contribute the amount of the premium that we're going to pay for the high deductible. So if an employee says, you know what, I just, I'm too scared. This is just too much for me. I can't do it. Okay. You know, you have to look at what you're going to potentially lose in trying to move with your HSA money and then ongoing, but it's there if they just, for some reason, can't. But again, then the risk is, if you go next year or a couple of years down the road, we don't offer anything but that plan, you've missed your chance to get that upfront money and then also those wellness hours. And then the other reason to go ahead and offer these plans is we have a few employees who are 65-plus. They are not eligible to participate in a consumer-driven health plan. So they, that plan would be there as well, and we will address them just a little bit differently. Instead of, here's just what you pay, we're asking that we would pay 300, 600 on their premiums because they can't help it, but they can't go.
Right.
You know, so we don't want to penalize them because of the fact that they cannot move.
So, again, this is just to wrap it up. It's a essentially flat, I mean, $7,000 isn't flat, but that's based on assumptions. So it's an essentially flat impact to where we are today for the 2012 budget. Assumptions state a significant savings in 2013, and that's even with seeding the HSA, as we stated. And it will, I won't say it will control, that's probably the wrong word, will mitigate future healthcare costs, because even the high deductible plan is trending at 5%, about half what the others are historically right now. And it continues to provide quality care for our employees without that sudden significant strain of having to not only say, I need to pay something to go to the doctor or take my kid to the doctor, but I don't have any money in my savings account, not only do I have to pay, but I don't have any money either, and try to fund them both at the same time. We're asking you to incent them over quickly, because that's good for everyone, including the pool, and give them some seed money to start with, and they have to put their premium in as well. That's where we're at. That's our proposal, partnership.
Looks interesting. I'm curious about the wellness plan. I mean, is there more than just the time to go see the doctor for those particular procedures? I mean, is it, I don't want it to turn into something where everybody's got to eat celery and we get some well-meaning national politician joining up with a plate of sugar.
No, this year, actually, that's it. You know, we're going to look at continuing to do wellness plans. We've had some, like, we've done lunch and learns, and we do our employee health fair where we do our blood draws. So we have some on, some things that historically we've been doing. We're going to continue to do that.
Smoking cessation, weight management are all part of that plan. So what we showed was not the entirety, it's just the soft cost of what the city will provide, the available hours for people to go and not have to take sick or vacation time to meet those appointments. The other offerings will be there. If somebody wants to quit smoking, the wellness plan will.
But those are requirements as well, too, though, weren't they?
Right. You must participate in that wellness plan in order to.
But, but the cost of the physical and dental checks has not come out of your HSA. That's part of, that's part of the high deductible plan itself. So it's not a, there's not an out-of-pocket piece associated with participation.
We know, as we looked at it, just the change of, I'm not sure who provides the coverage or anything else, if it'll have an impact on any of the healthcare providers in town from the business standpoint? Are they going to be limited in any way if folks that were patients won't have the opportunity to be a patient any longer?
No, because the high deductible plan is a PPO, so actually, there's a broader network of doctors that are available. So there is no impact to the employees that have doctors in this area.
Okay. How many people right now are in the high deductible plan?
We have 11.
And of those, how many are employee-only?
And then, how many of the 80%, how many are in Tier 2 and Family Plans, basically the rest of them? Is that right? Well, there's 91 total employees on our plan.
Okay, so basically, 80 are in the other plans?
Yes, roughly. There's four right now on employee, on Tier 2 of the high deductible and one on employee plus family.
I'm sorry, say that again.
When this data was taken, there's the five employee-only, there's employee plus spouse with children, there's four of them, and there's one employee plus family. So there's nine total there. We've had two new ones come on that come from the studio.
Of the 11, or?
The two new ones are both family, so you can add two more to the family.
To the 11?
No, 11 total.
She only has to break down for nine when this was taken.
Nine, right, when this was taken.
And since then, two more family have come on. For total of 11.
Okay. And then, when it says city pays on the new structure, health revision, the slide says 100% of the employee-only plan. And the previous slide, it said least expensive. Is that also the case?
Well, the least expensive, that, least expensive, when we played the 80, Larry, that did not include the high deductible. The least expensive plan of all of our plans is the high deductible. But in our old, in our old structure, when we played the 90, 80, it was separate, because the high deductible was not part of that. We did the least expensive plan, which was the PPOB and then the two HMOs.
And that's where we are today.
Right.
Where the others are proposed.
So I guess I don't understand why, so where it says city pays 80% of the Tier 2 and Family Plans, right? Why wouldn't it be the least expensive? I mean, excluding the high deductible plan?
Well, the high deductible is the least expensive.
I'm not sure.
But that's not what you're calculating your 80 or 90 percent on?
As we're standing today, no.
More of the 80. So you're saying that they, that 80% of the Tier 2, Tier 2 being spouse?
Or children.
Or children. Okay. And so you're saying that 80% number is of the amount that was for the HD?
No.
No.
The least expensive plan for Tier 2 in the current structure was the PPOB, and the total premium on that was $1,041.
Okay. And then the two HMOs, the?
And the, the two HMO employee-only was, I'm sorry, I gave you, I gave you the current rate. The last year's was $954 on the PPOB, I was looking at the wrong column. And on the HMOs, the employee-only was $407, and the family was $1,078.
And that's what we're using today.
That's what we're using today. 90% of that least expensive, single, and 80% of those other two.
So 90% of the $407.
90% of the $407.
And 80% of the $1,078.
$1,078 and then $954.
Or 80% of either of those, those totals?
Because the Tier 2 and the family are separate, are different plans.
So, I guess I don't, where are you getting the savings of $95,000? I mean, you're not requiring, requiring all the employees to go to the high deductible plan?
We're only offering that much for the city's contribution. So yes, in a sense, we are. While we may not actually force them to change their plan, the city's contribution is going to be based now, instead of saying, the single except for the high deductible, now it's, the high deductible is what we're going to pay. What the city will pay, what the city will contribute, regardless of what plan. If you don't want to change, okay, but you're.